All right, I would like to welcome them to this regular meeting of the Delray Oaks City Council. Can I have your call, please?
Councilmember Uwi.
Bresson.
Councilmember Alec.
Here.
Councilmember Shirley.
Here.
Councilmember Berger.
Here.
Mayor Donaldson.
Here. Please join me in plugging the lead.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of America, with which we stand as one nation, indivisible, with the great majesty of our our.
All right, next item is public comment. General public public comment means we will matter subject to the jurisdiction of the city and the council that are not on the agenda. Anyone wishing to address the city council on matters not appearing on the on the agenda may do so now. There'll be a time limit of no more than three minutes for each speaker. No action will be taken on matters brought up under this item. And all comments will be referred to staff. Public comments now open.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Before our remarks, and I would like to use some knowledge, I did reach out to the mayor and he did respond back to me very quickly. I really appreciate that. But I feel that the subject here is something that needs to be out more in the open, not a conversation. So I wanted to read my statement to get over the record. And so with that, frequently don't care if you can't remember, but so there are. All right. I want to I want to express my disappointment at the recent city select committee of area mayors. Delray Oaks previous support facilitated mayor Anna Velazquez via voting member of LaFco was changed to Selena's mayor Donovan. I fully appreciate that many considerations go into these decisions. And that Selena deserves a larger share of the say in many things concerning Selena's salary. But it's not what it's right. They don't get to pick, or they won't, and leave the scraps for everyone else. Selena has no voting seat on LaFco for twenty of the last twenty-five years. So one that deserves to have their turn at the voting number. Of course, this this vote was never about what was fair, rather, it was always about Calamity's allies using LaFco to slow down the water districts by out of Calamity, as they have done for the last four years. Delray Oaks residents, like all other Peninsula residents, voted overwhelmingly to support the buyout of Calamity when asked at ballot points. So what had mayor, so what has mayor Velazquez, excuse me, was on record as respecting Monterey Peninsula voters' decision to pursue the Calamity buyout. This puts her squarely at odds with the allies of Calamity. Placing Mayor Donovan, a Calamity supporter, on LaFco as a voting member ensures that LaFco will continue to back Calamity and oppose the will of the majority of Peninsula voters to control their own water. Mayor Donaldson, your vote against Mayor Velazquez ensured that Delray Oaks vote was aligned with Selena's Valley and Calamity interests and not the interest and expressed desire of the majority of Delray Oaks residents. The results prolongs the control of our water by a four-profit company and higher water rates for Delray Oaks residents. In the future, I sincerely hope that Delray Oaks elected officials with the well-being and aspiration of Delray Oaks residents at the forefront of every decision. I don't want to let her know in my last thirty seconds, I do want to just commend the police and our, the Seaside Fire Department, and some of you may have known my mother-in-law, Del, grew up her shoulder a couple of weeks ago, and she called me, which was not the right call. I got there, and I made a call nine-one-one, and it was seemed like seconds, and I had two Delray Oaks officers there. Right behind them was Seaside Fire, and then the EMT showed it, and the rest of it, they took care of. But I just want to say, and I have to admit, keep, I felt to get their names, but I just wanted to get on the record and say thank you. It was Delray Oaks, we were well served. Please, Seaside Fire being there, I couldn't believe I passed it out there. And they were very professional, very empathetic to my eighty-five-year-old Del, mother-in-law. Thank you.
Thank you, girl. Hello, everybody. Hello, where it's on. I just want to also agree with the last person about the water on the shot, because I thought we discussed it, or had a few different votes and discussions on and a different not Selena's, that it would be Hollis, not the other mayor, so that we would have a chance of buying out Calamity. So I was surprised that it was swung over to the Selena's mayor. Just one comment. On that, thank you.
Good evening, Dennis Allen Delrayo. On the other hand, there's the, it it was a small majority of people on the Peninsula that voted for the buyout to pursue the exploring possibility of buyout. So the thing is that I did some little looking, and then the Monterey Peninsula Water Management District has, in their re- monthly meetings, they talk about how much money's been spent in this effort to try and buy out Calamity. And and really, what's happened is is that it seems to me that it's a misguided effort. The, if you look back and see the amount of money that's being spent, and the majority of it's going to lawyers, no offense over there. The majority of that money's going to lawyers, something along the order of five million dollars, I think, is the number right now. It was about three point two million a few months ago when I looked at it, and about one point eight million of that was going to legal fees. So I never understood quite why we didn't just take a more rational approach and try and work with Calamity to control the price of water. And now we have this hostile effort to take it over, and Calamity's not for sale. This is just going to go on for years. I will never see any cheaper water. Matter of fact, the cost of my water's going up. And I think it's past time that we take, again, and there's been several looks at doing away with the Monterey Peninsula Water Management District. In the past, there was an effort to do it, and it was turned down by our our senator at the time, John Laird. Did not take any action to bring it up in the state legislature, requires state legislature action to do away with Monterey Peninsula Water Management District. So I think I think there's a lot of good logic behind Dennis Donahue, the mayor of Selena's, being on that LaFco commission. It is the largest city in the valley, and they need representation, and he's got the responsibility of looking at, not only for the city of Selena's, but also the the interest of the farm people. So he was pulling a lot of different strings, and I think he's a very good man. He'll make the right decisions for the people of not only the Peninsula, but for the people of the valley. Thank you.
All right, any other public comment?
Mayor.
Bresson.
Could I make a public comment?
Sure.
Okay. Um, so I have three requests for some of you, for all for all of you, actually. So region Monterey, that's our landfill. As we look towards the future, we need to make some big decisions. And it's a big philosophical decision that we need to decide on, and I need all of your input on this. I don't have all the details, but just in a broader sense. I I'd like to hear from you. Would you rather have your rates for garbage increase a little bit more each year and know that you'll have longer life in the landfill? Or would you like to keep your rates low and know that we're going to shorten the life of the landfill? Now, I don't fall really on on either side. There's lots of things we could do. I know that previous councilmember Alian was was part of the people who really did a good job in reaching out for regional contracts that brought in, you know, we're bringing in nine million dollars worth of San Jose trash into our landfill right now. So and that contract ends in twenty-three to six. So we're trying to figure out how we're going to move forward with that. So my request for you is to read my council report, and then I got my contact in there, so if you can get back to me on that, that'd be great. Second thing, I was also at the city selection committee where Mayor Donaldson made the decision that I was very disappointed in. That's also in the council report. Feel free to check that out. My third request is that we are going into budget season, and I think it's really important, and you'll see other council members, other councils doing this, is they have meetings where they try and figure out what are the priorities of the council, what's the priorities of the city? What are the goals? And I'd really like it if we could have one of those meetings. We've never really had an opportunity for people to come. Besides, we have our finance meeting, but that's at noon on a Friday, not, no, except occasionally, well, like, all the time, and sometimes deaths. But I'd like it if the entire council could be a part of those discussions, and we can have an open budget meeting. And then also, so if you can help me sort of advocate for that, I'd appreciate that. And then also for strategic planning, for long-range planning. We haven't done any strategic planning in the city for up to almost three years, for coming up on the three-year mark. So and I, you've heard me say it before, I've tried to advocate for it. I need your help. So you can also help me advocate for strategic planning to happen. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other public comments?
I'm Alice Green on Sascido Avenue. And I just want to thank councilmember Shirley for her reports. I think they're very interesting, they're well-written, and very informative, and I'm very grateful for your hard work. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, there are any other public comments?
Okay, letters to read. So we received a bunch of quotes outside the city, and you passed us the read these on the record. So they're with me, it's gonna take a while. First one is from Mike Valapa, the executive director of Land Watch. On February seventh, Cardinal Mayor Dilburn and Delray Oaks Mayor Scott Donaldson voted against the interests of their constituents to support Selena's mayor Donovan, Dennis Donahue's appointment to the local agency commission of LaFco. Most political observers expect Donahue to follow the lead of his predecessor on LaFco in obstructing the public buyout of California American Water, whereas the other candidate, Soladad Marion Velazquez, was expected to support the buyout. We hope we are wrong about this, but in supporting Donahue, Mayor Burn and the others are apparently aligning themselves with the corporate interests of California American Water rather than the public interests of their constituents. As reported in Monterey County Weekly since 2021, LaFco has supported the pass of the Calamity buyout, which fifty-six percent of central voters supported on the 2018 ballot, as measure J. A majority of Carmel and Delray Oaks voters voted to pass measure J. Yet seven years since measure J's passage, the will of the voters has been denied, largely because Calamity and its LaFco supporters have done everything in their power to obfuscate and obstruct a publicly mandated buyout. Who, sorry, why would two Peninsula mayors presumably presumably with a full understanding of the implications of their votes go against the interests of the same constituents that elected them? We don't know, but we hope you'll ask them why they rejected Soladad Marion Velazquez, a candidate expected to support the buyout in favor of Donahue, a candidate expected to obstruct it. The next one is from Barbara Moore. I'm voicing my strenuous displeasure at your vote to put Mayor Donahue on the LaFco board. You know there is a strong public statement, or sorry, public sentiment to buy out Calamity and instead have a publicly-owned water utility. LaFco's vote opposing the MPWMD's request was rife with improper improper reasons voiced by several of the LaFco members. For you to support putting another Calamity supporter on LaFco will result in added delay and further unnecessary costs to we ratepayers who have already been subjected to unconscionably high costs for water by Calamity. I request it. The next one is from Melody Chrislock, the managing director of Public Water Now. We are deeply disappointed with your February seventh vote for a new mayor's LaFco representative. Your vote for Donahue was a vote against your own constituents and all those on the Peninsula to continue to struggle under the burden of Calamity's outrageous water costs. A number of supervisors and mayors clearly explained to you what was at stake, yet you chose to reverse your January vote and support a Selena's mayor who stands with Calamity against the Peninsula. It's certainly easy for Donahue to stand with Calamity. Calamity does not control his water, and his constituents do not pay Calamity bills and would not experience a fifty percent to seventy percent rate increase of Calamity's D-SAL or cover bill. It appears Donahue saw you as an easy mark. He certainly would never have convinced the mayors of Monterey or Seaside to vote for him. No matter what he told you, Donahue stands with Calamity. His appointment to LaFco will delay the decision on the Calamity buyout and cost every individual who pays a Calamity water bill much more over the coming years. And Calamity can now continue to use the Water Management District's lack of LaFco approval to try to block the will of the voters in the eminent domain case. All of this because of your vote and your influence over new and uninformed Cardinal Mayor Burn. Your voters should be asking you to explain why you prioritize Selena's Valley interests over theirs. DRO voted sixty-one point five percent for measure J. And no, measure J was not just a feasibility study, as some falsely claimed at the mayor's meeting. Measure J mandated the Water Management District to proceed with a buyout of Calamity if feasible. It was proven feasible by outside consultants in 2019. If you represent a tiny fraction of Peninsula residents, yet you made this decision for all of us. I wonder if you believe in democracy at all? Why did you vote against the will of the people? Every time we pay another outrageous Calamity bill, we certainly will all be thinking of you, Matt. Okay. This one's from Vicky Pierce from Cedar Grove. Keep reading this, or everybody get the gist. I could do that, all right. When the mayor's committee met to appoint a new LaFco representative on February seventh, you voted for Donahue over Velazquez. Why? You owe Peninsula residents an explanation, as well as your constituent of Delray Oaks. A large majority of us voted to part ways with Calamity and to have the Water Management District run our water system instead. Velazquez would have facilitated this desirable outcome. Donahue is allied with Cal, allies of Calamity. He will delay the process that was going forward, costing all of us time and money. Your vote and that of Mayor Burn were against the interests and expressed wishes of your own voters and those of the rest of the Peninsula. What were you thinking? Again, you owe all Peninsula residents an explanation because all of us will suffer a kinder choice. I respectfully request city clerk Karen Ollman to read this. This one is from Sylvia Sheen. I hope I'm pronouncing that right, from Seaside. Your appointment of a representative that will keep MPWMD from getting LaFco approval delays and negates the will of the voters. But Peninsula voters overwhelmingly voted for measure J. Over sixty-one percent of people in your city voted for measure J. Measure J says the voters wanted to stop the skyrocketing cost of water. The voters wanted the water service to be in the hands of a public agency. It distresses me and puzzles me, and why do you want to raise the cost of water for us living on the Peninsula? Your vote did precisely that. Pretty boring. From Kate Mulligan. Congratulations, you finally poked the beast. The citizens of Monterey County have been working for decades to get Calamity out of our water business. You have some pretty nasty goings-on with politicians and administrators mucking up the works for the entire county, and now we know who is responsible. Even if I am not in your district, I will put all of my volunteering time and energy to get all of you out of office. You know the facts, and you can count on all of the outraged community continually reminding you that you are not representing your people. You will not be voted in at the next opportunity. Start looking for a new job or a grift, since that seems to be all you are good at. And this is, oh, sorry, Kate Mulligan saying. So the last one from Barbara Moore. I am voicing my strenuous displeasure at your vote to put Mayor Donahue on the LaFco board. You know there is strong public sentiment to buy out Calamity and instead have a publicly-owned water utility. LaFco's vote opposing the Monterey Peninsula MPWMD's request was rife with improper reasons voiced by several of the LaFco members. For you to support putting another Calamity supporter on LaFco will result in added delay and further unnecessary costs to we ratepayers who have already been subjected to unconscionably high costs for water by Calamity. That's all.
Are there any other public comments? My last chance. If seen none, public comment is not closed. I would also encourage folks to take a look at the council reports, where I provide in there a summary of the meeting for the city select committee. Our next item are two proclamations. The first one is honoring Black History Month. And I'll read that. Whereas the city of Delray Oaks is committed to diversity, equity, inclusion, and mutual respect as a fundamental aspect of a healthy, thriving community. And whereas in nineteen seventy-six, as part of the nation's bicentennial, Black History Month was formally adopted to honor and affirm the importance of African-American history throughout our American experience, and serves to promote cultural enrichment, ethnic pride, and self-esteem. During Black Hist-, during that, excuse me. During Black History Month, we celebrate the many achievements and contributions made by African-Americans to our economic, cultural, spiritual, and political development. Black History Month is a time for all Americans to remember the stories and teachings of those who helped build our nation, took a stance against prejudice, to build lives of dignity and opportunity, advanced the cause of civil rights, and strengthened families and communities. And whereas the Black community has been the target of discrimination and violence based on identity, which conflicts with our core values as a community. The observance of Black History Month calls our nation's attention to the continued need to battle racism and look to the future to continue to improve society so that we may live up to the ideals of freedom, equality, and justice. Now therefore, I, Mayor Scott Donaldson, do hereby proclaim February twenty twenty-five as Black History Month. I urge all citizens to celebrate our diverse heritage and culture and continue our efforts to create a world that is more just, peaceful, and prosperous for all. We also have a second proclamation celebrating National Women's History Month, and I'll turn it over to councilmember Shirley.
Thank you. All right. Whereas March is National Women's History Month, and whereas we recognize the invaluable contributions of women who have dedicated themselves to advocating for equity, diversity, and inclusion in all aspects of society, and whereas women from diverse backgrounds have long been at the forefront of efforts to address systemic inequities and promote more inclusive and just society. And whereas the courageous advocacy of women for practical goals such as equity, diversity, and inclusion serves as a beacon of inspiration for all individuals and individuals. Whereas in twenty twenty-five, we honor the women who have tirelessly worked to dismantle barriers, challenged prejudices, and created opportunities for all individuals, regardless of their background, and attacks against diversity, equity, inclusion programs and training in our institutions. Now therefore, be it resolved that Mayor Scott Donaldson do hereby proclaim March twenty twenty-five as Women's History Month in the city of Delray Oaks. And be it further resolved that we encourage our communities to celebrate the achievements of women who have championed equity, diversity, inclusion, and reaffirm our commitment to advancing these principles in our society. Let us honor the women who have dedicated themselves to advocating for equity, diversity, and inclusion, and let us continue to work together to build a more just, equitable, and inclusive world. Signed, the state of twenty-fifth of February twenty twenty-five, Mayor Scott Donaldson.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we have a presentation regarding California's new statewide daylight law. So with that, should I go hand it over to you?
Okay. Council mayor, thank you for having me today. Daylighting, nothing like daylight savings time. I heard you might, totally different. So it went into effect January first of this year. Sibley Bill four thirteen, it basically mandates the cars park from an intersection twenty feet away and fifteen feet, there's a curb extension. It allows for cars approaching the intersection to see more clearly people crossing the street. It's a safety issue. So I want to show you a little bit, if you go to slide, the next slide, what we're talking about. So in the upper left-hand corner, you can see there's two cars with the X's. They would no longer be allowed to park there. You can see how much that would clear up if you go down to the the bottom right. The the Kona vision is much greater without those cars being parked there. They have a little guy getting ready across the street. You can't see that it's a little guy, but he is. We don't want him getting run over. So that's the reason for this. We want cars to park and stop. They stop or stand or park twenty feet back from the intersection to allow greater vision. Go to the next slide, please. That's a curb extension. We don't have any here. Thought I'd show you what it looked like. I didn't know either. So fifteen feet from there, Monterey has quite a few of those. So if you do go to Monterey, fifteen feet, that's the rule. I have a video, I hope folks can hear it. Austin RPD did put a pretty well-done video, and pay attention to the timer that they have. They have a timer on how much time the driver has to see somebody walking across the street with and without daylighting, so you can see a big difference.
I'm informed, maybe, about the California Senate of four thirteen, also about this daylight. Daylight refers to a lot of previous stopping from parking your car within twenty feet of the left or right crosswalk. There is an extension of the curb in the road. Vehicles are required to maintain a fifty-foot distance from the crosswalk. When drivers truck their vehicle at crosswalk, visibility of vehicles approaching crosswalk is reduced. Drivers are more likely to hit bicycles or pedestrians near the crosswalk due to visibility and having less time to react to those entering the roadway. Children are particularly vulnerable because they are short and are more likely to be not visible by cars within fifteen feet of the crosswalk. This new California state law will help increase the visibility of pedestrians, bicycles, and crosswalks. This bill will help address California pedestrian mortality, which is nearly twenty-five percent higher than the national average. Saturday Bill four thirteen will begin effect on January first of twenty twenty-five. The California State Department will enforce this law, violation notices, and order warnings to vehicles found in violation of this law. Thank you very much, and you will.
We have a last slide. Is that my question slide, or do I actually have something next? So, there we go. So before I take questions, our goal is not to go out and write a hundred tickets next week. Reason why we're presenting to council, reason why we're talking to the audience is because we want to get the word out. So we're going to use the acorn, we're going to use some different things. We have morning citations to try to pass on this knowledge. Does not require red curb, so we're not going to have, you know, hundreds of miles of red streets out there. It's just something that folks are going to have to get used to, and they're going to have to know a lot. But I do think it makes for a much safer neighborhood, especially with us, we have no sidewalks, you know, we're walking down the street. It's tough, cul-de-sacs on Portola. It's hard to get a car in between them when you're driving like twenty feet on each side. So there will be growing pains, but we're not trying to make people miserable. We're just trying to prevent someone from getting red over there. Yes?
Right, hold on, hold on a second. Yeah, so I'm going to start at the end with any questions or comments that you might have. Councilmember.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chief Chris, thank you so much for this presentation. I have, I was not even aware that it will be implemented this year. So, but this is a good law because it would make us safer in the streets, as pedestrians. I just have a question regarding what challenges does the department, the police department, perceive in implementing these new restrictions, particularly to the areas that have been the party?
Yeah, it is a challenge. We can't ignore it, though. So there will be some growing pains, unlike somewhere like Monterey, where they have designated parking spots that are in there. um, there will be some growing pains. Unlike somewhere like Monterey where they have designated parking spots that have been there forever. There's probably quite an outlay of money to get things re-marked, to get the streets in compliance with this. We didn't have that, so that's a benefit on our side. Um, but again, we're not going to ignore it. Can't because if somebody does get hurt, it rests on our shoulders. We want to, we want to just uh, basically educate the public and hopefully gain voluntary compliance. But that Portola area, that's tough. So a lot of cars parked in the street. Every one of us have been through an intersection where there's that kind of parts, I don't know. I mean, right up in between both streets. We're looking for that stuff, certainly. Um, we don't have measuring tapes. Going to try to be judicious with the way that we handle this, but we're not going to.
Well, but thank you. I know you're going to reinforce this uh, well, in our city. And I'm just like thinking, uh, will there be signages or uh, permanent markings to leave them? Uh, just to inform people that not the bar there.
The plan is no. Um, that's what this education is going to be about. Um, we've been talking about daylighting. Uh, I know that I, I kind of live in that world. You folks don't, um, but I've known about this for a while. Um, and the point, in fact, it was written in, in the actual law that the red markings aren't required because that's, it's a law. You know, when you think about it, we don't want to do that. We want to gain voluntary compliance. It will be second nature when people start following these rules, understanding them. Um, so it, and I don't, I haven't had talks about putting up signs, but I, I wouldn't think so. We don't need them. Why? Take the expense of painting the road, putting up signs, we don't think.
Okay, thank you. So education is really key.
Education is key.
I believe that, yeah.
Absolutely.
All right. Vice Mayor Howell.
Thank you, Mayor Donaldson. Uh, well, no real questions. Uh, great presentation. Doesn't leave much room for me. And I have similar questions if any, as a council member who we, and um, I'm all for it. And I advocate for public safety in every way, so this is a positive move forward. Um, I do hope that uh, the public outreach in increasing awareness is thorough. And uh, I agree also that delineation and over marking of streets initially and then maintenance thereof setting this up accordingly uh, may be a little counterproductive. So I just hope that we explore every avenue um, and gentle reminders, warnings as to, and uh, and people will eventually, hopefully uh, get the gist. This applies, of course, to residential and commercial anywhere within the city. Absolutely. Um, and so yes, I hope that people become aware of the law. I've seen other laws coming in place. Distracted driving was two thousand nine, I think it was, two thousand seven, and I still see people driving stuff. Either way, I hope that it works out, that we all get the um, we all fill in the place.
Yeah, the vast majority of people in our residential neighborhoods are us, you know, so uh, that's uh, good. You know, we're not dealing with millions of tourists coming into town like Monterey, people from out of state, whatever. So that's why I think we have a good chance at education and um, and I, I think we'll be successful, really, definitely.
Okay, Councilmember Shirley.
Yeah, thank you. I'm wondering, you must know there's certain intersections that where you just know there's a car that's parked close to it. I'm wondering if you just have like a flyer that you could put on there. You know, just, you know, if I saw a flyer that I was like, oh, I'm not supposed to park here, then you know, then I would make that mistake.
Yeah, thank you for bringing that up. Um, the city manager, when he met with me and we discussed doing this presentation, um, he had found something that Monterey put out that I will absolutely steal on the same threat, assuming. And so any warning citation would come with that education. So that's our, that's our goal.
Good, awesome, thank you. Okay, so the other thing that I want to mention is we got a public comment from M S P on this item.
I saw it.
You saw that. So um, it, from my understanding is that we've got, um, we have regular bus shuttle stops, which seem to be in compliance to this law. Um, but we have two bus stops, the ones that are closed because of Portac that won't be able to be in compliance for this. So um, maybe this is a question for Mr. Lorca. Yeah, I missed. He was wondering if we have an ordinance that would allow them to still have the bus stops there even though they in violation.
Yeah.
I was about to think, so that's not our facility, that's council access facility.
For the, oh. Oh, okay.
Yeah, so it's unfortunate that the staff with that, so they came with the council, otherwise we couldn't address this before this presentation.
Yeah, I, I just saw it today. I think they were just, you know.
Okay, I'm worried about that one. They say, I think it's close. I don't think so. I mean, twenty feet's basically those cars, they had two cars, one and a half cars, it's about twenty, twenty feet, but I think there's room there. Um, certainly the one like by the front on, I think we got room there. I don't know the one we're talking about on Carlton, so is there one right on the turn?
There was one that they mentioned, City Hall.
Yeah.
City Hall, and then.
Yeah. I don't know what they mean by that.
Yeah.
But we'll work with them. Absolutely. We'll figure it out.
Portac, project plans.
Yeah, okay, okay, great, thank you.
All right, Councilmember.
Chief, thank you very much. Appreciate this. Uh, are there any recommended markings or suggested markings to delineate that, if we ever thirteen percent? That would strike other than, I mean, other than a red curb?
No, uh, if we were gonna, if we were somewhere like Monterey that there actually have parking stalls, we could do it that way. But again, my recommendation and Councilman brought it up regarding the, it's not just painting, then you've got to repaint it everywhere hours so often, so. Um, I do think we can do this without painting red. Um, this will find out, right? Uh, but I, but I do think we can, and that's, it would be, it would be a lot. I mean, it would really change the way Portola, it would be a lot of red.
Yeah, we're trying to avoid, I mean, red curb can be unsightly. Uh, it also is a maintenance problem and it is a cost. So uh, if we were, as a visitor serving community, like the city of Monterey, they're going out and painting red curb everywhere because you can't educate people who are coming in at this time. Um, but we, we're lucky we have a small community. The police have interaction with most of the community members while we're in the, um, mostly positive, right?
Absolutely.
And so I think education will go all the way in our community. Uh, and then we're, where we, as we go along and as we identify problem areas for people park and we staff problem, then we'll talk about some sort of strategy or something to that area. Thank you very much.
Very well. All right, I'll take it out to the public. Are there any questions or comments from the public, please?
How long did it take through on the education on the bike, the bike lane? That you can't go into it to, did it take that long or did you, I heard that you, how true it is?
Sure.
I heard that you did a big sort of swoop for a couple of days. I don't know whether you took it to people or not. And I've never, rarely do I ever see anybody going into the bike lane now to get random comments thrown left.
So.
I was wondering how that message got through.
Right. Um, educating people is different from educating them and then having them not do it. Those two separate things. Because just because we tell you you're not supposed to do it, doesn't mean you're not going to do it. So um, in terms of bike lanes, still people pass on the right and they always will.
Not many.
It happens, maybe, maybe less, but we have done some sweeps, like you said, um, where we cited tens of people for doing.
I just wonder how we discovered for most people to think, I can't do that. Uh, I think it is a measure to how many people would be.
Sure.
I can't park this close to me.
We've had a bike lane for a long time and, and maybe for consistent, I've done it since I've been here. I think Russell put the bike lane in, right? And so five years, um, and they'll do it long after you go as well. So it's not a can't see it, but um, my hope is that when people that drive through town, uh, in, make up, let's say on Canyon, Delaware, two percent, one percent of, of the, the people that live in Delaware, so the rest, they're just people going from here to there. We're talking about neighborhoods of people that live there. So that's where I think we have a better chance of educating women, giving voluntary compliance. So we shall see.
Do you think uh, the local TV stations could be persuaded?
They have. There's been lots of stories on daylighting, um, you know.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll, we'll do our best. Again, we're not trying to go out and write a bunch of tickets. Um, but we got people parked in, in the right place. We can't ignore it. If somebody gets hurt, it's going to be on us, so.
But you don't have to stop twenty feet back from the stop sign if you're actually approaching the stop sign.
Sure. Yeah, this is, this is dangerous, standing or parked. He's not driving.
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other public comments or questions? Chief, do you have anything else you want to ask?
I don't. Laura pushed the button really well. We had this planned and worked out. So thank you.
Yeah, great comments and questions. Uh, definitely education's going to be the key. And as you heard, being a small community, um, it, it'll be easier for us to take the educational route as, as opposed to initially taking the enforcement route. So that, that's a, that's a good aspect of what we have to do here to get into compliance. So thanks for being chief.
Thank you all. It's, it's been a while. Thank you to my city manager. Talk about daylighting.
Thank you, Chief. It did good. All right, next item is the consent agenda. Are there any items among the council that you would like to vote? See none, take it out to the public. Any item on the consent agenda that you would like to see voted? All right, bring it back to the council for a motion.
I'll move to approve.
All right, all in favor?
Hi.
Motion passes. Move on to, well, we have no opening business, so move on to new business. So the first one is the adopt resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero one, which is updating and establishing the user and regulatory fees. So I'll turn it over to the city man.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. So you all remember last year, uh, you approved going out and for a contract to hire a consultant to help us with the fee study. Uh, we have hooked in our user fees and a long time, right? So we hired Terry Bassin from Clear Source and is Terry here or Ryan?
We have Brian, Brian Brown.
Brian Brown is here. Unfortunately, they have to be out of town after we scheduled this, so they're going to be doing the presentation over.
All right, one second. Can everyone see my screen? No.
Tell us why, okay?
Well, let me uh.
There we go.
Let's try it now. All right, share. All right, how about now?
Now.
Okay. Let's try. One moment, please.
I'm sorry, I'm just listening.
Brian, would you like me to bring out the presentation on our end and then you can move to the next slide? Is that one for you?
Yes, I'm not sure why it's not allowing me to share. It keeps saying it's not valid.
Okay.
If you could, that would be great.
Thank you for your patience, boss. Hold the window plate. Hold on, and there we are.
Do that without sharing the people online.
Okay.
My mind should be able to see this portion right here. Kim, are you seeing? Um, that's not a good slide.
And were you able to pull it up on your end?
Yeah, give us a minute.
No problem.
Just gonna. All right, there we go.
Okay.
And, and Brian, before you start, um, we're having some sound issues, so if you could speak up, it would be great.
No problem. Can you guys hear me? Is that, how's this tone?
That's good, thank you.
Okay. All right. Well, good evening, uh, mayor and members of the city council. Thank you for this opportunity to speak with you this evening. Uh, as mentioned, my name is Brian Brown and I'm here from Clear Source. And our company helps public agencies across the state with their revenue needs, such as identifying the costs of providing services and establishing the fees for cost recovery. Uh, this evening's topic is related to a recently completed study of the city's user and regulatory fees. Go to the next slide, please. Can you go to the next slide, please?
All right.
Go from.
I see her.
My apologies.
For what it's worth, it makes me feel a little better about struggling with the, sharing my screen.
All right. There we go.
All right. So I'm going to walk you through the presentation, but what you'll hear is that the first half of the presentation looks at the idea of fees conceptually. And the second half is going to be specific to Delray Oaks. Um, just by the way of orienting you to the item before you this evening, we'll talk about some background, some fundamentals and terminology that are common throughout the state. Uh, what we're seeing in Delray Oaks and then conclude by providing a few considerations before moving to next steps and council's consideration of adopting the proposed fees. Uh, next, per, uh, perfect. So we'll get in the background. Next slide, please. Just by way of background, cities collect fees and charges for services performed at the request of or specifically for an individual, business or group, as opposed to services performed for the community as a whole. So you can think about this as in Delray Oaks, you review plans and issue permits and so forth. And these types of services ensure safe, orderly, and aesthetically pleasing development within the city limits for you and other communities in state. Typically, what we find is that agencies use what we call user and regulatory fees as the primary funding mechanism to recover the cost of providing these services. Next slide, please. Uh, generally, we think about public agency funding sources. We think about taxes. However, communities typically want to use their tax revenues to provide services that provide broad community-wide benefit using funding mechanisms like user and regulatory fees when you have a direct receiver of services. Uh, I mentioned that we're dealing with a variety of types of fees this evening, such as your building, planning, engineering, and encroachment, police, administrative and facility reservation fees. Uh, the majority of these fees are service-based fees for services like permit view, planner view, permit processing, uh, entitlement review for compliance with zoning code, uh, inspections, uh, requests for police reports, fingerprinting, and so forth. It's also important to know what we are not examining or what we're not discussing this evening. Uh, the study does not consider taxes. Uh the study does not consider taxes, utility rates, assessments, and other uh revenue and revenue streams of that nature. So things like taxes, which are largely what your uh uh community thinks about on a day-to-day basis. Uh as the funding source for government services are not part of the study, the study focused on user and regulatory fees, which are for the discrete and periodic requests for services by individuals, businesses, and and different groups. Uh so we're gonna provide some fundamental or talk about some fundamentals and some terminology um that apply to these types of studies, and you may be curious why agencies perform these types of studies. Uh they're performed periodically to ensure compliance with with the various legal requirements. Uh when performing cost of service studies and establishing fees, you want to ensure compliance with the California Government Code and the California Constitution. The study was influenced by and performed to be in compliance with it with these with this legislation. And when you recover uh the cost of providing uh fee-related services from the receiver of those services, you are essentially freeing up general fund revenues to be used for other purposes, typically those that are more of a uh community-wide benefit. And then the final bullet on this slide um is this idea that when we recover our cost of service, it helps the agency to continue providing these services, but also to meet the service level expectation of the community. Uh as mentioned, we have set some legal requirements that authorize the use of fees by agencies and which also provides guidance and parameters with fees. Uh these fees are governed by the California Constitution, the California Government Code. And because these fees um they're adopted, and because they are fees, uh they are adopted by the city council and adjusted from time to time by the city council at the conclusion of a public hearing versus a tax which would be voter-approved. These are going to be um a a public hearing will be held and in turn council will uh have the opportunity to consider and adopt these fees. Um on this slide, what's important to note is that the user fees are not taxes, something that that we've already mentioned. Um and for this reason, the fees must be linked to and not exceed the estimated and reasonable cost of providing the service. Uh these are stipulations that are outlined within the California Constitution and um are very are are common uh fundamentals to uh establishing fees in the state of California. So here are some of the terms that you may have noticed uh within the staff report and that you will notice throughout the presentation tonight. Uh we call commonly reference these concepts of cost of service, cost recovery, and subsidy, and because some of you may use these terms in your day-to-day life, we thought it was important to just walk through them and make sure that we're speaking the same language conceptually as it relates to fees and the related concepts. So when we think about cost of service or uh for service-based fees, think about the fact that there's a human providing some sort of service. So to establish the cost of service, we identify the hourly cost of providing that service, and then we think about how long does that service typically take us to provide? Some services may be typically easy um and relatively quick, while other services um whether they be for a specific project um or or due to their size, maybe more complex and take many, many hours. So once we know um our hourly costs or hourly rates and our estimated service time, we're able to identify our cost of service for uh a specific service that's, you know, fee-related. Uh our cost of service uh is gonna represent the ceiling of the fee, meaning uh we cannot charge more than the cost of the service. Fees should not exceed our cost of service because au the authorizing legislation limits the amount a fee can be charged to the estimated reasonable cost of providing that service. So the goal would be not to recover more than our cost of service or to have the fees charged for the services provided to generate revenues beyond uh the costs to actually provide that service. Essentially, what we're saying here is uh these services and the associated fees that are to be charged cannot be used as a profit center, if you will, um to fund other uh city activities. Uh so we are limited when charging fees to this concept of cost recovery only and are unable to charge an amount beyond that. Uh once an ag agency and the council understand what its cost of services are, it frequently uses uh what I will call uh its philosophical judgment, if you will, in terms of how much of that cost should be recovered. Uh a lot of times, the way a council thinks through this, is there a clear receiver of benefit? And if I see a clear receiver of benefit from the service, I they typically would target higher levels of cost recovery versus if I see a broad community-wide benefit, I may charge fees that target lower levels of cost recovery and use our general fund tax dollars to service that broad community-wide benefit. In the cases of fees, uh the fees that we're examining, most of the communities we work with across the state uh see a very clear and direct benefit from these services and therefore typically a high individual benefit for those requesting those services. Uh as an example, um if I choose to remodel my kitchen or add on to my house, I'm the one that benefits uh from that remodeling. I'm the one that's requesting that change. I receive the enhanced property value. And in turn, I receive the enjoyment of that additional um remodel or that additional square footage I've added to my home. Uh so when the city recovers its costs of providing those services um or or is looking to to examine whether there's a direct receiver of benefit or if it's more of a community benefit, um i it's helping to ensure that other residents and businesses within the city limits are not covering the costs of my addition of to my house and so forth. Uh the council has the option. Um if you so choose to recover less than the full cost of service, um that that is, you know, your choice. Uh you're authorized to charge less and you can do that. Um it it's gonna be completely up to you. We just like to show this chart uh to illustrate the concept that if a service costs five hundred dollars for the city to perform and the city chooses to recover something less than that, the city will incur a cost. And in circumstances such as this, we would just say that it has partial cost recovery. Uh where some of the costs are to be recovered from the receiver of service and the remaining costs are already paid from some other city revenue source, which is typically gonna be your uh general fund tax dollars. This is conceptually uh gonna be common among all public agencies throughout California. Your uh neighbors are gonna be subject to the same uh parameters and the neighbors and their neighbors would follow the same. So this isn't gonna be unique to Delray Oaks. Um it's gonna be unique to, well, it's it's gonna be common to all public agencies um across the state of California. Uh so now we'll kind of dive into um what we're seeing in Delray Oaks. Uh perfect, okay. So in Delray Oaks, uh when we think about um development fees, we're talking about your building, planning, and engineering fees. Uh when looking at your development fees in aggregate, uh what we saw was that there was some room for enhanced cost recovery. Since it's been some time since your fees were examined and a cost of uh service study was performed and the fees haven't uh recently been significantly adjusted, it's not surprising that we're seeing this room for enhancement and cost recovery on your development-related fees. So as part of performing the cost of service studies, study, uh these fees were structured to enhance the correlation between the services provided and the fees collected. Um fixed fees were were established for a lot of the city's common minor permits, which provides a clearer picture for applicants of the fees which are required for their ser for the services they would be requesting. Uh just, it's easier for the applicant to know what would they be paying should they choose to move forward. With that said, um for your planning fees, the cost recovery is going to vary from fee to fee and the full cost recovery is targeted for the building and engineering fees. Uh for your administrative fees, we have two categories here. Um the reserve facility use fees and the please fees. Um generally speaking, when we look at the facility use fees, these fees are proposed to be adjusted by approximately twenty percent, uh resulting in an annualized change of approximately five percent per year since the city's last update. Um if the fees are to be left unchanged in an environment of increasing costs, the city's cost recovery levels will continue, will deteriorate. Uh for the police fees, uh it's important to note that only minor changes are proposed. Changes are intended to align the fees to the city's cost of service and or the amounts that are gonna be established or that are established by the state of California. Uh one of the things uh you may ask yourself um as a council is if we choose to move forward with the proposed fees, how will the proposed fees align to other agencies in the region? Uh are are our fees gonna stand out? Uh those are the questions that often we find councils asking themselves. So we completed a regional fee comparison, and what we see is that you could adopt the fees as presented before you this evening, and you would align well with the other with others in the region. Uh you have a ton of fees and i it isn't uncommon for an agency to have hundreds and hundreds of fees. Um there's a lot of fees, um or agencies ha tend to have a lot of fees because uh they're trying to contemplate what are the various scenarios and requests for services that may come through my door and other agencies are doing the same, and that's why a lot of time these fee studies um or or your master fee schedule may be, you know, ten, twenty, thirty, forty, fifty pages and so on. So with this in mind, uh it it's unreasonable and uh would be incredibly difficult to do an apples-to-apples comparison for all fees. So instead, what we do is we grab a handful of fees that are gonna be common from agency to agency and then look for general patterns. Um I won't walk through each of the following slides. Uh the regional fee comparison slides in in great detail, but I want to point out though is that what you're gonna see is that Delray Oaks is currently at the lower end or mid-range of the spectrum for the region when compared to other neighbors, and if the proposed fees are adopted, you'll notice that Delray Oaks either is staying um in that low to mid-range or moving to the mid-range of the spectrum. So we'll look at a handful of examples here in a moment, and we'll move from small-scale projects to larger-scale projects on the building side. And then we'll look at a few planning fee examples that can be readily compared from agency to agency. Again, what you're gonna notice is that each of the sample fees examined follow the same general patterns. Okay, so um what we have here is a small project. Um and I guess wh- when when thinking about building permit fees, it's common for agencies to to and when doing these fee comparisons to view these as a percentage of the project cost. Um here in the and in each chart hereafter, you you will see that the dark blue shading uh represents Delray Oaks and your neighbors are shown in a lighter blue shade. So you'll see um a current uh dark blue uh bar, and then you'll see a proposed bar. The current bar is showing you where your fees uh are today, and the proposed is showing you where you would fall as it relates to these uh uh other other neighboring agencies within the region. Let's see here. Okay, so you'll notice that even if the fees are adjusted, um that you'd stay in the mid-range of the region. And you're gonna continue to see this in the charts that follow. Uh it will sort of depend on the fee you examine, meaning the ones we'll show you, but in every scenario considered, what you're gonna find is that you're within the mid or low end of the range of fees charged by other agencies in the region. So again, I'm gonna move through these rather quickly. You're gonna see this general pattern. Um we're Delra Delray Oaks today, as shown here before you, for this small-scale project uh is is either gonna be in the low to mid-end of the region and Delray Oaks tomorrow is in the proposed. If the proposed fees are adopted, it will be in the mid-range of the region. So here, what you're finding is that you're currently in the mid-range and that you'll continue to be in that mid-range um if the new fees are adopted. Next slide, you see kind of a a similar pattern. Next slide for a slightly larger project, you're seeing a similar pattern. Um here, we kind of start getting into uh larger-scale projects, but again, you see the same pattern. Um where you are today is in the mid-range, and if adopt you adopt the proposed fees, um tomorrow you'll still be in that mid-range. So you're not gonna be a a weird um provocative outlier. Um so here, we start looking at building or at the planning fees. Um we see the the same pattern for the fees that can for the planning fees that we just talked about. Um as we looked at and compared your the proposed fees to other agencies, except here, what you're gonna find is depending on the fee we look at, uh you'll find that Delray Oaks um in this, i it tends to be on the lower end of the range. And if the proposed fees are adopted, Delray Oaks will either fall in the low to mid-range, low or mid-range depending on the fee. So that's an appeal. You'll see the same here for the variance. Next slide's gonna be the zone change, and again, you're at the bottom here and moving to the mid-range with the proposed fees. Uh same thing for the administrative sign permit. Um and the tentative parcel map. So all this to say, the proposed fees will improve the city's cost recovery um without having the city become a weird or regional outlier. And I think that's important to note. Uh the proposed fees are gonna align well with your neighbors, uh leaving the city in the low to mid-range when compared to others in the region, not moving you to the high side of the fees uh charged by their agencies. So one of the the kind of final considerations uh for council, yeah, which is frequently asked about is is they ask about the regional fee comparison and they typically will ask, what is gonna, what is the fiscal impact to the agency of these proposed changes? So it's important to remember that, like, what's the primary purpose of these adjustments to the fee schedule? First, it's to ensure that we correlate the fees to the services provided to ensure compliance with the law. It is to have the proposed fees um in many cases seek full cost recovery um for new development. Uh third, um we're trying to avoid cost recovery deterioration for the non-development-related fees. Those were things like the the police and the rental use, and as a result of adopting the proposed changes in the fees before you this evening, uh it's anticipated uh conservatively that the city would generate approx approximately sixty thousand dollars in additional general fund revenues that would be available to fund other needs of the city. So next steps, um what we have here is uh it's being asked that council will conduct the public hearing and then consider adopting the proposed updated user regulatory fees um before you this evening. This is gonna conclude the presentation, um but now would be the opportunity for council to conduct the hearing. Um and if you have any feedback or comments, I'm happy to receive them. Or if you have any questions, myself and city staff are available, but thank you again for your time this evening and the consideration of this important item.
Well, thank you, Brian, and thanks to everyone for hanging in there. Like the most exciting topic, but um fusion, um and you kind of got to witness a milestone in our IT capability in here. Thanks, Aaron and Laura. All right, I'll start with.
That will not withstand.
Okay. All right, I'll start with council member.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, uh Mr. Brian Brown, uh for doing this study for us. Uh and that's really like a lot of information, and I'm very happy that I could see graphs. And my first question is, uh I was just wondering, uh in those regional fee comparison, uh oh, we di I didn't see the fees for our neighboring feed base, which are Monterey and Seaside. Uh is there a reason why it's not in the graph?
Um I believe, so I mentioned that each agency has a lot of fees, and they charge fees for different things. Sometimes they'll include um multiple services provided by multiple departments, so that's where it becomes difficult to do the apple-to-apple comparison. Um Seaside, I know, was um considered and is in there, at least for the planning fees, I think you'll find. Um in many cases, if you go to the, if you were to look at the variance, Seaside's gonna be on the higher end of of the of the scale. Um and what what were the other agencies you were inquired about?
The Monterey.
Oh, Monterey, um and then the yeah, Monterey is in there too on the on the variance. Um I'm seeing them on the planning fees. And then it, what what some often becomes difficult on the building side is sometimes the building permit fees are charged in different ways, whether it's done based upon valuation or in other manners. So that's where, again, it gets hard. And each agency will handle different departmental fees differently. So they were definitely considered, but in in effort to kind of give you an apples-to-apples comparison, um that's why they may be showing the planning fees but not in the building fees or or something of that nature.
Okay, thank you so much for that response. I have another question. Uh are there any fee uh increases that might disproportionately the seniors and low in? The seniors and low income uh, residents that we have here in Delray Oaks?
Um, if I heard the the question is, are there any specific fees um, that would disproportionately impact? Low income or senior citizens, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Um. Nothing is jumping out on on the building and planning side. It's going to be more if they chose to. You know, uh, develop. Do you do some sort of development activity or something of that nature? So I I would say, and then looking at the others. No, uh, there there aren't going to be any that are going to be specific, the targeting um. Those those specific demographics.
Okay, thank you. Another question, uh, Brian, I'm just like wondering. Uh, are there examples of other cities who implemented this? Type of fee uh, fee structures and then but however they encountered some negative consequences?
I I'm having trouble hearing you, but I believe the question was. Are there agencies that have implemented similar fee structures or or performed a cost of service study and what have been the? The consequences of them doing so?
Yes, that's correct.
I mean, I guess the consequence would be. Some agencies and we're not seeing this here in Delray Oaks where if they have not performed a fee study. Um, in twenty years and believe it or not, that's happened. Um. The public will tend to have some sticker shock when you try to bring your fees current. Um, and even if you're now trying to get full cost recovery, um, they've literally been underpaying, the city's been subsidizing. Um. Though those fees for a long time and a consequence would be is that they tend to be very vocal and upset. By the increase in fees, even though you're not charging more than the cost of service. Um, again, we're not seeing that here in Delray Oaks at that level of increase. Um, with that said. To avoid issues of that of that sort, one of the things that we recommend in in the industry typically is that we that these studies be performed. Um, every three to five years. And then in those interim years that they actually uh, that the fees be adjusted by uh, CPI, if you will. Or some cost um, cost of living um, indicator to ensure that. There isn't in three, five years, a huge uptick or need to increase your fees. They've kind of incrementally been um, increased year to year.
Thank you. And my last question uh, is regarding behavioral impacts. So um, have we considered potential behavioral changes that these fees might encourage? Like for example, uh, would higher permit fees uh, discourage homeowners to from property obtained permits? Especially for safety related uh, renovations?
On the building and planning side, we um, typically don't see. Behavior altered um, by keeping your fees current. Um, the development community is going to be very. Um, in tune with with the need to do so. As for the homeowners and you know, your individual residents that may be coming to the city for more of an individualized project like we were talking about. We we typically don't see this type of that fee studies deter that um. Have a behavior in any way.
Okay, thank you so much, Mr. Brian Brown. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Uh, Vice Mayor Howard.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for a very thorough presentation, Mr. Brown. I have no questions or comments at this time.
All right, thank you, council member Shirley.
Yeah, I don't have any questions. Thank you, Brian, for the presentation. Uh, we heard the same presentation at the finance uh, committee. So um, we were able to ask questions there. I think the fact that we are looking at a sixty thousand dollar um. Uh, bump in in revenue from this show that it's it's this is a long time coming. We should have been doing this a long time ago. I'm happy that we're going to be recovering costs that we're incurring. Um, and and I'm also really happy to hear that the facility use fees aren't going up very much. So I think the people in our community who are regularly using the parks or things like that. I think um, that's not going to be a big lift for them. And I think other people who are. Um, going to be getting permits for building and you know remodels, things like that, as long as we're comparable so that they would, you know, have to pay in other cities that we have make sense. So, thank you.
Council member Burger.
Brian, thank you for your presentation. Uh, I agree with um, everything council member Shirley said. As well, I feel that changes are modest and very conscious of the uh, surrounding uh. Neighbors and income of our city. Uh. And so I think it's it's just aligned what we need to be doing. So thank you.
All right, thank you. I'll take it out to the public if there are any questions or comments. Yes.
I just wondered when the um, last time some of these jurisdictions did what we're doing now and whether. Uh, you know, how long ago they've adjusted their fees and whether they're looking at increasing their fees so that maybe this is going to be skewed. Hollister is kind of an outlier there. Are they kind of the the leader in where the fees are going? Just makes a question.
And Brian, I'm not sure if you heard that question, but it was in relation to other jurisdictions. How long uh, have other jurisdictions waited to update their uh, fee schedule? If if you have that type of information uh, regarding surrounding jurisdictions.
So I I don't have um. Specific details in front of me, but what I can tell you is when we are performing this regional fee comparison. We're we're looking for agencies that have also performed a fee study somewhat recently. We're not looking for the example that um, I provided where the agency hasn't, you know, performed a fee study in twenty years, right? Um, or or something of that sort. So we want them to be somewhat current. Um, with that said. Best practice, it's recommended that a full cost of service fee study um, be performed every three to five years. Um, and that interim adjustments uh, be performed, you know, annually. Um, more of a a cola or a cost of living uh, inflationary increase. Um, with that said. We we know that a number of these agencies um, are. Have recently performed uh, these uh, regi- these fee studies. So again, none of these should be. Like outdated. And one last thing to note. The cost to provide a service um, can vary greatly as you'll see here from agency to agency. So you you, I mean, there's always going to be a a number of agencies that kind of fall within this this norm. And then you'll have some outliers, right? Like you saw in some of these um, an agency where they are, you know, double or almost triple. Kind of what the next highest fee is. So um, with that said. Uh, yes, it was a consideration when preparing the regional fee comparison. Um, I think. But no, we're not showing you any agencies that have not performed a service like this in uh, recent years.
Thank you, Brian. And Mike, was there any other part of your question that he didn't answer?
No, that's.
That was good.
Yeah.
Okay, any other public comments or questions? Okay, um. As I look at this, really, there are four things, four takeaways that you can remember about everything that you just heard. Uh, the first one is this has been long overdue. I just asked the city manager how long it's been. And he thinks it's been around ten years. Uh, it's long before he got here. Uh, so it was in need and overdue to be updated. That's the first thing. The second thing is it's not a moneymaker for us. It's for us to recoup the cost of processing requests. So. Those charges have increased over time. I mean, it costs more for. Our administrative staff and our inspectors to do what they do. So this brings that up to a level where. We are being compensated for what they have to do to process those requests. The third thing is, as you just heard, the amounts that. We will see on the new fee schedule are comparable to other cities that are out there. So we're not out of whack. Uh, Mike had mentioned uh, Hollister. I mean, you see on there that there are some cities that. Uh, charge a lot more than we're proposing to charge with this update. And then the last thing to take away from this is. We are doing this update before we have potential development out of Ford or. So that any developer costs that are out there, we have an updated fee schedule. Um, to 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 charge what's required to process anything that needs to to happen with that process. So if you if you remember anything of those four things you can take away, I think I think you got it. So uh, with that, I'll bring it back to the council. Are there any further questions or any discussion items? Yes.
I I mean, I think it should be noted too that um, we don't have to go through this fee study every single year. Obviously, we may do this another in another five years or so. And in between that time, um, there'll be some CPI increase. So we may still see some of these fees increase, which doesn't have to be passed by the council. Is that correct? Right? So um, so I, you know, we'll be kind of keeping up with um, with inflation as we go, you know, before we do another another study. So.
Just to restate that.
Yeah.
You do approve it through budgetary process.
Okay.
Every year, I mean, you you all as part of the budgetary process adopt a new fee schedule for the next year.
Okay, and so then will you point out which ones are increasing? And I think there was some that could be increased another second.
Any other input, questions, comments from uh, the council? Uh, I want to take a motion.
Motion to approve resolution two zero two five dash zero one.
I second.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
That motion passes. I'll move on to the next item of in business, which is to um. Uh, approve an increase in six percent in contingencies for the Rosita Road. Emergency repair project and authorize the city manager to sign change orders. I'll turn it over to the city manager.
All right, thank you, Mayor. So you all remember um, last year uh, with the. The rain events, we had an emergency situation on Rosita Road. With the hillside sloping and some of the roadway starting to give way. So we got theme of funding, uh, well, not given, sorry. We got a federal highway administration grant, which is managed through Caltrans to pay for that. Um, as. Frequently happens with emergency projects, there's unforeseen uh, issues once you start cutting into the ground and digging in and finding out what the reality of the situation is. And that's what's happened here. Uh, we, when we approved this, uh, when when you all approved this, you approved it with a fifteen percent. Percent contingency, which is normal for a regular public works project. Um, we were well under the grant award for that. So that was fine. Uh, and we hoped that we were going to get the project done within that fifteen percent contingency. Um. All things being what they are, we 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 started digging into the ground and they found things that they weren't expecting. Um, some of which is some of the. Fiddle that they were digging out, they thought they were going to go put back in and compact and use that. Uh, because of the com- composition of the uh, materials that they dug out. They weren't able to reuse that. So that had to be hauled away to the landfill, which is a cost. And then new better infill had to be brought in and compacted. That was a cost. Uh, they um. Added some additional French drains to drain the runoff better so that it doesn't impact that slope going forward. Um, and then there were some additional uh. Measures taken to stabilize the hillside with geo netting and things like that. So. Uh, it it was approximately a twenty five thousand, a little bit buffer in there just in case something else comes up before we finish this thing up. Uh, but we're estimating within an additional six percent increase, which is about twenty five thousand dollars. Uh, that should give us the buffer that we need to get this project done and wrapped up. Um, and get that road reopened for everybody quickly. Um. So that still keeps us within the grant award. So there's no increasing budget question. And so.
All right, I'll start with council member.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And uh, John, thank you for the briefing. I understand really like there could be, there could be other costs that we haven't. Thought or the in in there. So uh. I just hope that there are no more other additional expenses, you know, so that uh. We won't be getting funds from our from our general fund.
Yeah.
And yeah, so I was just like thinking when I read this, um, uh. I I was just like thinking like since they found things like under underneath the ground. Uh, does this emergency repair point to a larger uh, kind of like infrastructure issues that we have in Delray Oaks? That we probably should proactively address. So that's just my my worry.
Um. Uh, yes. So uh, this was obviously one of the most pressing uh, issues that we had to deal with. And the the section of the roadway that we've repaired, uh, what the repair should last generations. Uh, and and be just fine. There is some additional work that Ron and Sherman and I have identified. On that hillside that we would like to do just to uh, add some more bang to the buck. And so um, the work that's currently being done, you'll see that there's no longer, when they do the paving, there'll be no longer be rolled curve. And gutter, there will be the vertical curving gutter. Um, that'll only be on the section of road that uh, is currently being repaired. And so uh, eventually we would like to continue that all the way up to the rise of the hill to the first drain that's up at the top of the hill right there at Paloma. And then all the way down to Rosita or to Angeles, to that drain that's down there. Uh, so that it's all continuous and it it. It's not an issue right now. The roll curb and gutter will be fine, but with that vertical curving gutter, we can keep more of the water from going over the side. And impacting that slope. And the more water we keep off of the slope. The longer it's going to last. So uh, that'll be a future project that we'll bring back for consideration. Uh, we have some other priorities that are pressing issues like you mentioned, like our parking lot back there, which is sloping. And some of the damage along the area up here where people have parked on the roll curb and pushed it down. So now. We've got the impact of water coming off the roadway into the park and a road in that hillside. So we want to address that too. And yeah. We have. Our total just falls. We have to take these things in small bites and get them done, but yeah.
Uh, thank you so much.
We're on top of it.
Yes, thank you.
All right, Vice Mayor Howard.
Thank you, Mayor. So uh. Thank you, uh, city manager Gergen. So just to clarify, the uh, the change order and the increase in the contingency is for as cover uh, unforeseens. Too late and where to anticipate the proposed and just alluded to uh, extension of the storm drain. At a later date. That will be completed during this phase of project.
Right.
Right. Wonderful. And I'd like to uh, extend uh, my gratitude to our community for your ongoing patience. So while our normal daily routes are somewhat interrupted. And um, any updates on the, of course, we've had weather to contend with and the aforementioned conditions. But I'm sure the community might like to know projected uh, time of completion.
Karen and Laura, what did Ron say?
It's projected for the end of the month. So we're hoping by the end of this week to have it, if everything holds. So keep your fingers crossed. I mean.
Banner is on the website too. So we keep it and then update it.
Um, if you don't see it on the banner, if you click on the arrows inside the red banner. It'll click through or you can click on news and it'll bring up the listing.
On the hillside, hillside stabilization has been completed. So now it's just roadway. So the the unknowns should not be an issue anymore. Yeah, best laid plans.
All right, council mayor or. Council member Shirley.
Thank you, Mayor Donaldson. Uh, thank you, city manager Gergens. I'm excited. I have no questions. Thank you.
All right, council member Berger.
Uh, thank you.
All right, any questions or comments from the public? All right, I'll bring it back. Uh, do we have a motion? Okay, a second?
I second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion passes. Um, the next item on the agenda are uh, council reports that are in the packet. Any staff or reports or city man?
Yeah, just generally thank you to the candidate for your patience with all the construction projects going on. Um, for the most part, everybody's been really good about dragging through this S curve curve here. Uh, we have noticed, the chief has noticed and his staff have noticed. People are getting used to it and starting to speed up a little bit. So let's keep those speeds down and keep the workers safe and our residents safe as they go through there. Um, but um. Yeah, and like Laura and and Karen said, better than I can update you all. If you have any questions about what's going on with any construction in the city, your best bet is to look at the website first. We try to keep that updated as regularly as possible, usually several times a week or is on top of that. Um, if you don't find the answer that you want there, then I would call the city hall. And if we don't have the answer, we'll find it for you.
Thank you.
Yes. About, um, check out page twenty seven of the Weekly. Uh, we got a shout out. Um, from the American Lung Association. We went from. um from the American Lung Association. We went from grade F to an A. And we have the most points out of all the peninsula cities. So um feel free to uh take that and brag, but um I'm grateful for uh Councilmember Hellick who helped me um bring these ordinances to the city for um our no smoking and um multi-tenant housing and no smoking in public places. So um I was at a reded meeting and the Carmel Mayor was like bragging about his little cigarette that things you can put in. And of course, Mayor Delgado from Marina, who has the same ordinance, says, oh, well, we don't even allow smoking outside, so we don't need those. So and I I wanted to say the same thing. So anyways, I'm very proud of our city, so thanks to the council for giving us such a good grade. I would be in a student.
With all due respect to Mayor Delgado, we did get a higher grade.
We did, yes, we did.
All right. Uh, correspondence is also in the packet and our next meeting, March twenty-fifth at six P M, and we are adjourned.